All right, good evening. Welcome to this evening's student recognition ceremony. I'm Wayne Kazmercheck, I'm the district superintendent, and we have three groups here tonight, and I'm gonna kick us off with our all-state soccer athletes and coaches. So congratulations to the following students who represented the district as all-state soccer athletes. Erica Townley. And we have Dave Ashley, co-head coach, and John Dirkheising, co-head coach. Okay, and this is Mr. Ashley. Yes, and we should mention what we're handing out tonight is a certificate and a coveted bear pin. And this is a very special recognition, this is the only place you can get a bear pin, so it's a big deal. So we'll have you come back and we'll take a picture. Congratulations, by the way.
So are we able to crunch in? Sorry, there's the tables up here too, so perfect. And then if I could have more of you there. There we go, perfect. And I'm gonna take a few here, one, two, three. We'll go like this. Awesome, thank you. And if any parents or friends want to...
Someone's asking for you. Thank you. All right, I now invite White Bear Lake... Pardon? Oh, all right. Thank you, parents, if, uh, parents and guardians, family members, if you're here, thank you. Maybe, could you please rise if you're here? None of them here tonight. They both can drive on their own. Oh, there's one. There we go, all right. All right, I now invite White Bear Lake Area High School North Campus Principal Dr. Ellison Gillespie to the podium to recognize members of our cross-country teams. South Campus Principal Don Bosch wasn't able to be here this evening, but he sends his best regards. So, Dr. Gillespie.
Good evening. Congratulations to the following students who are individual qualifiers for the boys' state cross-country meet. Isaac Mariama. Trig Solberg. Gary Wilson, volunteer coach. Sean Gritzmacher, assistant coach. Sean was the state boys' cross-country assistant coach of the year for 2017. Dave Percival, assistant coach, section assistant coach of the year for 2018. And Dan Kovacic, head coach. So if we could have the coaches and runners come back to get a picture?
Okay. I wanna see everyone. Here we go. One, two, three. I'm gonna take a few here. I'll go off a couple times. Awesome. Did everyone get their pictures? Thank you.
If we could also have the family members and parents of the runners stand to be recognized. Congratulations to the following students who qualified as a team for the girls' state cross-country meet. Natalie Andres. Eleanor Handlin. Haley Miller. Josie Moore. Melanie Pinkel. Olivia Schwintek. Maddie Burkertke. Shannon Grant, assistant coach. Sue Worrell, assistant coach, section assistant coach of the year for 2018. If we could have the runners and coaches come up for their pictures.
And if you just wanna find your window, make sure you can see me so that I can see you. Come on, you guys. There we go. Great. There we go. One, two, and three. Geez, I'm gonna take a few here. Okay, I'm gonna move out of the way.
If we could have the family members and parents of our runners stand to be recognized.
And that concludes our ceremony this evening. Thank you for coming. There are some snacks back in the room, back in the corner of the room, so please grab something on your way out, and the regular board meeting will begin at seven. So, thank you again for being here. Is that all right? You're good?
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Fahey here. Mullen.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Beloit.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
Okay, would you all please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have, before us, an agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Ellison will, Mr. Wilson will be the second. Any discussion regarding the agenda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? As have it, we have an agenda. We also have a consent agenda before us, before we move the consent agenda, we have an addition to the consent agenda under personnel. It is the HR director needs to be added, I believe. Dr. Kazmercheck, is it...
Yep, Mr. Mons, Mr. Matt Mons', his contract is on the agenda for approval this evening, and Mr. Mons is here with us tonight, and he had a chance to meet all of you. So that will be the addition.
Okay. So with the addition, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Newmaster, excuse me, Dr. Newmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion regarding the consent agenda? This will require a roll call vote.
Fahey, aye. Mullen.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Okay, we have a consent agenda. This is a portion of the, of the meeting where we accept public forum or public comment. I, typically how that works is there's a white card over there on the table. Do not see any up here on the dais. Is there anybody that'd like to address the school board? Okay, seeing none, we will move to our first informational item, C1, which is the presentation from the White Bear Lake Center of the Arts. What do you see? Dr. Kazmercheck?
All right, welcome. We have two guests this evening, Bon Somerville and Kim Ford, White Bear Center for the Arts Board members, who will speak about the project. And it's, it's all yours, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us come. My name's Kim Ford, and this is Bon Somerville, and as mentioned, we are from the White Bear Center for Arts. We want to both extend our thanks to all of you for the partnership that we've had with the schools for the last ten, eighteen years, through the elementary programs and through the high school contests that we sponsor with all of you. We couldn't do stuff that we do at the art center without the collaboration of your teachers and your staff and the students, so thank you. Yeah. I wanna start by thanking also Mr. Sean Gritzmacher. He's one of your art teachers, and he's been instrumental in helping us have that connection with all of you, by helping us with trying to get the students to come to the art center and to make sure that the teachers know what's going on. What we did two years ago was we hosted, well, we had a presentation at the art center, and he came and he said, "You know what would be really great is if you guys were in the schools." And he suggested and planted the seed that Wing Young Hui, a very prominent photographer, come to the schools and do a project. And so through the Minnesota State Arts Board grant that the art center got, we were able to initiate that program here at North and South Campus, but it really was his idea, so thank you. Okay? I wanted to just explain a little bit about what that program was. It's called the What Do You See residency program by Wing Young Hui. He's an artist and a photographer that lives in St. Paul. He's internationally acclaimed, and he came to your school for two, three months, from 2016 to 2017, spanning that time, doing this project. And in his words, the project was about engaging students with, through the art, in a variety of mediums, with photography, essays, journalism, poems, ceramics, video, drawings, and chalkboards. And the students were able to use those different mediums to express something about themselves. And generally, what happened was it broke down barriers and it made them see things in a different way through the work that they did. And this is in his words, this is what Wing Young Hui says it is. The idea is very simple. I simply ask participants, students, to discuss what they see in their work. Does this piece of work mirror you in some way? Is it a window into the unknown? Or is it a bridge connecting the familiar to the unfamiliar? What emotions do you feel when you do this? If this were a movie or a poster, what do you think the movie is about? Do you think your, your friends see this as well? And in doing the artwork, he would always partner the students with another student that they did not know, someone they didn't know, and have this discussion. And what the students came away feeling was, they got to know each other so much better and realized many of their insecurities were the same, even if they were an athlete and a drama person, or, you know, just breaking down those barriers. So the books that you have in front of you, Bon is gonna talk about, and that's what we'd like to present to the two schools. And we put together a compilation of the artwork that was done.
And these are the books, and you will have them, and maybe I'll just kinda show people what kids wrote on pieces of black cardboard to resemble chalkboards about their feelings and different ways that they feel, and just all different feelings that they have. And so we thought a book would be good, because we, first we wanted to showcase some of the artwork that is in the book. Some of the students do, did beautiful, amazing artwork, and, but more importantly, the chalkboards let students bring out their thoughts and their feelings, and some of them touch on insecurities, inferiorities, depression, and then there's others that show joy and celebration and happiness. So it ran a gamut of feelings, but we felt that by distributing these to the various appropriate places in the school, students could have access and see what other students feel, think, maybe I'm not the only one. And we wanted to inspire students to talk with each other, to share these emotions that are portrayed in the book, to reach out for more inclusiveness, to reach out, to take that feeling of including everyone into their school experiences and beyond, to maybe help to get rid of some of the bullying and the cruelty that shows up in schools in this day and age, and in all days and ages, really. But especially, we want students who do art to keep up with their artwork, and for other students to think, "Well, maybe I can be involved in artwork," because it has many shapes, many forms, all kinds of mediums, and that no student should ever say, "Well, I can't do that 'cause I'm not an artist," because everyone is in their own way. And what we really hope to do is have students look at these and try to change maybe the way they feel toward others, maybe they can empathize, just stop the cruelty, 'cause there is a lot of it in the school.
I think an important thing for all of you to know is that Wing Young Hui had never worked with students before in this magnitude, with fifteen hundred students over a three-month period. It was such, it was hard for him, but he said it was such a success that the McKnight Foundation has provided him a award this year. He is the McKnight Artist of the Year, and he's been granted fifty thousand dollars to take this program, What Do You See, turn it into a curriculum that can be used nationwide. So, thank you.
We were the first.
We were the first, and he really, he really thanks you as well. One other thing we wanted to mention, just before we leave, is we have started a teen art forum, and we're trying to reach, we reach the elementary kids through the programs that we do in collaboration with your schools. We have a trouble with teens, we drop, they drop away from us, and so we've started this year, a teen art forum. We meet the second Monday of the month, and we had a very successful evening tonight with fourteen kids coming from North and South Campus to frame artwork, to see how to frame artwork, hang artwork, and then also get a lecture from MCAD, just to understand the opportunities for art in college level here. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, and enjoy the books.
Enjoy the book?
Yeah.
And make sure students use the book.
Any questions or...
See it and talk about.
First of all, I just wanna say, wow, what a powerful statement. Thank you very much for, for letting us see this book.
Well, thank you for letting it happen. It was a lot. It was a lot to ask of everyone. It was a big project, so.
Wow.
And there were so many other, I mean, we had stacks this high of chalkboards.
But there was ceramic work, there was other photography work, there was, a lot of students chose to do their own kind of watercolors or painting, so it really, Wing let the kids decide what was the best way for them to express themselves, which was really fabulous.
So, thank you.
Ms. Beloit, I think...
Did the students take their things home, or do we still have all of these, or does that...
Students took their work home, and it was distributed, we collected a lot of it, and then we went through it to create this book, and then it was given back to the art teachers, and they redistributed it to the students.
And we did get waivers from everyone in the book.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Questions, comments? Dr. Newmaster.
I just think it's great that we participated in one of his well-known projects.
Yes.
Because I've looked at his work probably for fifteen-plus years, and it's exciting, it lives on, and this will be looked at, thought about, and developed, you just know it. It's, it's exciting to have been the first.
It is, it's wonderful.
You should be so proud of that.
Thank you. If you need more books, we have them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to our next item, which is C2, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, members of the board. Right before tonight's meeting, we recognized students who represented the district in all-state soccer at the boys' and girls' state cross-country meets. Congratulations, athletes. Community members are welcome to stop by and chat with me over a cup of coffee over the lunch hour between eleven-thirty and twelve-thirty this Thursday, November fifteenth, at the downtown White Bear Lake Caribou Coffee. There is no set agenda, so please feel free to order a coffee from the barista and find me in the meeting room to join the conversation. November recognitions, this month is a busy month. We have Native American Heritage Month, National Community Education Day, Veterans Day, Geography Awareness Week, American Education Week, School Psychology Awareness Week, Education Support Professionals Day, National Parental Involvement Day. We have Thanksgiving break from November twenty-first through the twenty-third, and of course, Thanksgiving on November twenty-second. With our quick turn from fall to winter, it is important to remember the emergency school closing information in case there is a need for it. If winter weather is so severe that schools need to close, parents will also be alerted in three ways as soon as a decision is made. A school messenger phone message and email will be sent to all parents. A message will be posted on the homepage, www.isd624.org, and messages will be posted on the district's Facebook and Twitter pages. Always assume schools are open and in session unless you hear or see differently from a source listed above that we just went through. It is important to remember to dress warmly on these cold winter days. The White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation, through The Closet, has an ample supply of jackets, mittens, hats, and scarves. Should you know any families who could benefit from the generosity of our community, please contact The Closet at closetwblaf@gmail.com. Members of our foundation and other volunteers will then contact the family and make confidential arrangements to help those who do not already have warm clothes. And thank you to the many community members who have been engaged in our comprehensive facilities planning and site-based strategic planning processes that kicked off this fall. Our work this year has been exciting. The conversations we are able to have with many voices at the table are extremely powerful as we chart the district's future. We will provide updates to the school board and the community throughout the year as these engagement processes continue, but those who wish to follow along can do so at the district's website, again, www.isd624.org. And now McKenna Pratt is here with our student liaison update.
In this cold November, fall sports have come to an end, and winter sports are just beginning. I would like to congratulate the girls' cross-country team for competing in the state tournament once again this year. For seniors, November means early action college applications are due, so good luck to all of you who have applied or are planning to. This past week, weekend, Mamma Mia had their opening shows. I have heard nothing but amazing reviews, so if you haven't bought tickets already, there are a few still available for this coming weekend. Also, this week is the Career Pathways Expo on Thursday at South Campus from five to eight. I highly recommend attending this event to anyone who is interested in learning more about local businesses and the future careers they offer students. Lastly, North and South held their annual food drive for the White Bear Lake Food Shelf, which was very successful, as always. As we look forward to the holiday season, it's important to give back to our community. Thanks to all those who participated.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we will move to our first discussion item, D1, which is the review of the 2019-2020 draft calendar. Ms. Paul.
All right. Chair Mullen, Dr. Kazmercheck, Ms. Pratt, and members of the board. I'm glad to be here in the fall, talking about the calendar for the next school year. We have a much earlier timeline than we've had in the past. We've had a very diligent calendar committee working. We've had a chance to review this draft calendar with you at a work-study meeting, and we feel that this calendar meets the two outcomes that we're after. Number one, it maximizes instructional time, and it also maximizes the effectiveness of instructional time. The one thing I do want to bring to your attention is that after the elections last week, there was a group that met and actually had a follow-up conversation to what you as a board surfaced, in terms of, do we have any safety concerns, or are there any issues within our schools as we have four election sites in our respective buildings? First of all, there were many positives. The setup was very efficient, the volunteers, there were many volunteers in place, there were a lot of opportunities for students to serve as election judges, and we supported a high level of voter turnout. And there was some positive comments that they really, the voters liked having the opportunity to be in our buildings, to kind of just be part of seeing where, what the educational experience where that's taking place. But some of the challenges that you had mentioned were actually echoed in the feedback that we received. Students had to eat in the classrooms, there were issues of voters using the same restrooms as our students, some parents called them with safety concerns, and the parking was an issue at some sites, particularly during arrival and dismissal, which brought up some safety concerns by, by the staff and, and parents. And there was some loss of teaching spaces. So the one consideration that we would like to look at that is not on the draft calendar that we submitted to you last week, is that during the week of the elections next, in the next school year, we do have a professional development day scheduled for Friday, that same week. So we need to follow up with our, our principals and, and the calendar committee, just to look at the idea that several other districts have gone the route of having no school on Election Day, which we would then move our professional development day to be on that Tuesday. And we see that as a solution to still leverage the benefits of having the community come in and actually see, see, and celebrate some of the great things that are going on in our schools. Voters, when they're coming in, they can't help but seeing the student work and the things that are happening, even if the students aren't there, seeing the excitement of the learning that's taking place. And so we feel it's a way to take advantage of some of the benefits of having our sites serve as election sites, and also making sure that student safety is of our primary objective. So with that, that's the only thing you may see from this calendar to the one that you will vote on in December. And other than that, we are on track for feedback and approval in December. So do you have any questions?
Ms. Fahey.
I just, one question, April. April third is the end of the quarter, and then April tenth is a non-student day. I just, can you tell me the reason for that? 'Cause I was used to the non-student day being closer to that end of the quarter for people to finish up, particularly people that have quarter classes, et cetera.
Yeah, good, thank you for the question. As the committee of teachers and administrators looked, we're trying to look at a balance of multiple factors, and when we're trying to look at spacing out professional development days and days that teachers can collaborate to adjust instruction to meet student needs, and then where conferences are, that really drove the decisions of how each day was placed.
Ms. Wilson?
My question relates back to the polling rather than the calendar. At least at my poll, there were, South Campus, for the lack of a better term, election judge shadows. I was wondering if you could expound on that, what the student requirements there were, if any, what outcomes there were.
I don't have those in front of me, but I'm happy to follow up with you with that information.
Okay, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Pratt, would you like to share?
Yes, I worked as a student election judge, and we got to do every single job that you saw when you went to vote. We handed out the receipts, the ballots, signed people in, handed out stickers, and out of all the people that I talked to that did it, the students really enjoyed being able to be a part of like the voting process.
Okay, and thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Ellison?
I just have a question. Have you talked with any other school districts how they function with that day in the middle of the week? Sort of a, sort of a weird schedule. How do they handle it? And do they have the other similar concerns with safety? 'Cause, I mean, as a parent of elementary kids, that does make me a little bit nervous.
I, I was actually surprised to hear that there are several districts that have moved to having a non-student day on Election Day, and Mr. Maurer's gonna follow up with those districts to find out what were the, what were the things that worked well, and what were some of the things that they weren't intending to be consequences of having that as a non-student contact day, but it, I was surprised to hear that there are several districts that have moved in that direction. So we will make sure to provide that information if we do make the change on the calendar at the next school board meeting.
Great, thank you. Actually, my question was for McKenna. Do you think if it was a non-school day, I'd assume students would still be interested in that opportunity to act as...
Yes, for sure.
I would assume that.
Yeah, 'cause we have the day off anyway, because I went to go work from like eight to four.
Mm-hmm. And then just a comment too, I think in terms of, I know I made the comment before, but I think a real important consideration, particularly are familiar with sunrise, that that loss of... that loss of a, a teaching space for our physical education staff with, we never know what's going to happen to the weather. And to be cognizant of our teaching staff losing teaching spaces in addition to the safety issues, it would be really nice if something could be done because it seems like there's a certain faculty that loses their teaching space, not just for elections, but sometimes for other things also.
But I'd like to thank the board for bringing up some of those things as Kevin Klecker, our emergency and safety supervisor, presented to the board, and then our four principals, and then Tim Maurer, who put their heads together and actually looked for what were some different ways that we could approach and, and take advantage of the, of the good things and then address the challenges in a positive way.
Chapman.
What are the four sites? I know Otter is one, but what are the other three that are being used as polling sites?
Onika, Otter, the Alternative, the Area Learning Center, and Sunrise Park.
The, in addition to the students, I think it might be worthwhile to also look at if those sites, the individuals at those sites on those professional development days could be elsewhere. Just, you know, not wanting to leave them in a building with somebody potentially, you know, wandering around or whatever. When I went to vote at Otter again, there was just, you know, the, the makeshift dividers that I could easily walk around into the building. And, and so I think, you know, it, it would behoove us to also make sure that our, that steps are taken to make sure that staff is safe too.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else regarding the calendar? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
With that, we will move to our first, our next discussion item, which is D2, which is the first reading of School Board Policy 418, Drug-Free and Alcohol-Free Workplace, Drug-Free and Alcohol-Free School. Policy 421, Gifts to Employees, Classrooms and School Board Members. Policy 427, Workload Limits for Certain Special Education Teachers. Policy 510, School Activities. Policy 712, Video Surveillance Other Than on Buses. Policy 720, Vending Machines. And Policy 903, Visitors to School District Property and Facilities. The first reading, are there any questions regarding the policies that we have before us in the first reading? Dr. Newmaster.
I think I might have been the person that said, as we looked at this the first time around, we've got classrooms in there. And I think back to the big list of things that our community partners and parents and foundations have given to our classrooms. And from what I can tell of this, classrooms and schools are still included in this agenda item. And it seems like the solution to still including them is that any request for anything is approved by an administrator. Is that correct?
Dr. Newmaster, you're talking about, are you referring to Policy 421?
Right.
And I'll leave that for Dr. Kazmicek.
All right, can you ask your question again, Marge? Is it specifically to a portion of the policy here? Is it specifically related to one of the?
It's specifically related, my question is related to Policy 421.
Yep.
And still having the inclusion of, you know, I certainly understand individual people, employees, board members, whatever, but we've always been accepting of gifts to classrooms and schools and programs like TRAC. And it appears, and I want to make sure I understand it, that the solution to that is to, in this policy state, that any request is approved by an administrator, either a principal or the superintendent.
You're asking about a request. These are gifts.
Well, as they talk about soliciting or asking, because gifts are given, but often they're given because somebody from the PTO or PTA has requested a raffle item from a, a local place, or, you know, maybe there's a particular fundraising thing. So I just want to make sure it's really clarified because there's a lot of events, and every month we have a whole list of things that our generous residents have given to programs and classrooms.
Yep, so it does happen at the building level and district level where gifts are accepted and it, and it is typically, it goes through the administrator ultimately for, for approval so that the, the teacher or at the classroom level is, it's accepted as a school or as a, but not as an individual.
Well, generally, if something is coming from a PTO or a PTA, that would be through the administrator, would be involved in that action too.
Well, I'm just wondering if that's, if that's clear in here that every request, and I don't say that as in a negative fashion, but if we were setting this as a policy and we know that gifts are given frequently and generously for a variety of school events and school groups, is that, is my understanding the policy that before anyone?
It's under, if I'm understanding you right, general statement of policy, letter C, has it without prior approval of the building principal and/or in a manner that is otherwise out of compliance?
To fund school or classroom items by any means. So that, that says?
So it's saying that it's a violation.
How you violated the policy. And I guess what, what I think would be helpful is somewhere in there, if it makes it really clear that there's a procedure for that. You know, if, if you're going to have an event and you're going to ask, the PTO is going to go out and ask for support for that event or that team, that, is there a particular form or procedure, or is it just kind of whoever they ask that's the administrator of their school? That's what I was trying to clarify.
I don't know if there's a separate form. We can certainly, we can certainly check and follow up with you on that.
Because you wouldn't want someone to violate the procedure, but is there somewhere that you want this in writing from the principal or? That's the only little spot I thought, okay, let's, let's make sure that there's a check off that as we're madly planning to have a baby shower for the ECFE or something like that, that everybody knows exactly what they have to do before they ask if someone wants to donate diapers or something.
Mr. Wilson.
Does not paragraph D answer that? I mean, it lays it out that, you know, things that come in, Dr. Kazmicek, you as a superintendent have the final say on the acceptance, you know, the valuation of it.
So when an employee solicits, accepts, or receives a gift from a person or an entity. And I'm just thinking it would be nice to have something added in there that said, you know, do you do this via email, or is it in writing, or? I just think it's easier for somebody if there is some sort of a procedure so they actually know. I can see that discussion happening at organizations.
Yeah, we'll review that.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a thought.
Ms. Belloy.
I don't, another subject in this, he had.
I'm done.
I don't know if it matters one way or the other, but in several spots, it says of nominal value, and then it changes to insignificant value.
It says under $5 at some point in there.
Yeah. But letter D says it goes to insignificant.
Nominal value is crossed out.
But it shows up in several other places.
Like in C.
At two different terms.
You'll see, to see Dr. Kazmicek over there, right? And so I'm assuming that he's, and then we'll refer back, because this is the first reading, right?
Yep.
Just we'll get an answer on that. Anything else regarding these policies that are out for their first reading? Okay, we will see them back next month, and you will follow up with the questions that were asked. Perfect. With that, we will move into our first operational item, E1, which is the action on the contract for the health insurance administrative services. Mr. Wall.
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kazmicek, Ms. Pratt. At our October 22nd work-study session, we reviewed the RFP results for administrative services for our self-funded medical and hospitalization plan. At that session, it was noted that five vendors indicated interest in submitting RFPs. Three submitted bids meeting specifications that included Health Partners, Preferred One, and Blue Cross Blue Shield. Preferred One was the most competitive of the three bids. In addition to lower fees, the maximum claims the district will be responsible for will max out at 14.3 million as opposed to 15.9 million in the second bid, meaning the district holds less risk with the Preferred One plan. That being said, we're recommending the board approve the selection of Preferred One to provide administrative services for our self-funded medical and hospitalization benefit program.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to move the recommended action to approve the proposal for administrative services of our self-insured health and hospitalization plans to Preferred One for the 2019 calendar year?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Is there any discussion regarding the action? Ms. Fahey.
You know, I just had a couple of general questions, and they go to more being the self-insured. A couple, looking back at the packet that we got at the work-study, and just to clarify, with our, our health insurance, I know we have a nutrition services fund, a community services fund, transportation, but health insurance comes out of the general fund, correct? The same as employee, what the district pays would be out of the general fund?
Well, health insurance would be quoted the appropriate fund, so nutrition services, employees, that's where the expense would be.
Okay.
Quoted, yep.
So in, in terms of us being self-insured, if we have a number of, of high claims and the premiums we collect don't cover that, does that money come from the general fund or does that come from the, the fund balance?
Do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, we, we have a, we have insurance policy against excessive claims. So we get to the point of 14.3 million, anything above that would be covered by a policy. Does that answer your question?
The insurance.
Just overall, if our claims, if our claims are exceeding the revenues, ultimately our goal would be then to price the premiums at a level that would bring us so that we weren't running a deficit.
Okay.
Yeah, so the fund would, we would hope would be covering any deficits.
Okay. So then my question, you know, looking at the page five of the packet, and they're saying the trend, period one, 5.3%, period two, 9.75%. We're talking the expected increases? Is that what that refers to?
So that's page 91 of the PowerPoint.
I just didn't hear the numbers you referenced.
So, you know, in the Preferred One, it has the trend for period one as 5.3% and the trend for period two as 9.75%. And then related to that, the insurance committee suggested a 2% increase in premiums. Is that realistic with the trend for the increase?
I think that's more, I think, because next on the agenda is to set the rate, right? This is to set the self-insured, who's doing, who's providing those services.
So should I be asking my questions with the next one? But it was just, I just wanted to know was that the 2% increase, is that realistic increase for the premium? I just want to know if that's a realistic increase.
Yeah, thanks. When we studied the, the aggregate value of the plan, that, that 2% should actually work, we should be a little bit ahead at 2%. So right now, our plan is, we ended the fiscal year, or the, the fiscal 17, 18 with slight decrease, negative balance. We think we're going to finish this year positive balance. The 2% was the insurance committee's decision to, to create more of a positive balance. And so the Preferred One plan, we expect we're going to end, that 2% will be a generous addition to that.
Thank you. That was, I just wanted to clarify that, looking at all the numbers, I was trying to figure out how they all mesh together.
We had discussions between 0 and 2%. Well, actually, or we could have gone higher, but the committee felt like 2% would be a good number, help us get our reserve in a positive balance. And looking at our claims for, for 2018, we think we're going to be in a good position moving forward.
Any other questions regarding the action on the health insurance administrative services? Dr. Newmaster.
Just making sure I understand, thinking back to what we talked or listened to at the work-study, where you kind of went into it in detail. This is a one-year proposition for the self-insured plan, and it covers all of 19?
All of, yeah.
From this coming January?
Through December 31st.
And that's the only commitment, just for that time, for this?
Right, and then the rates will be reexamined for 2020, and the insurance committee will look at the, look at the status of the plan at that point and then, and then propose a rate for 2020.
A rate increase or a change of plan?
Right, so Preferred One could increase their administrative fees for 2020. Those aren't locked in. And the insurance committee then would look at if Preferred One has an increase in their fees and what the status of our claims were that year, what the balance of our self-funded policy is, and determine what our rate increase would be. Let's say Preferred One increased by 4%, we could, we could decide to increase by 4%. If our fund is in really good shape, we could increase by less than that. The benefit of having a positive balance would be that you can withstand increases in the, in the administrative rates.
I do understand that, but after this year, do you only look at that particular plan, or do you do what you did last time and compare?
No, after one year, we won't open up an RFP process again. It's a two-year, two-year RFP. So every two years, we're required to do an RFP for administrative services.
Ms. Belloy.
But don't we already know at this point that we have several of our, our groups have already given notice that they want to move to the public plan?
We, yeah, well, they've given notice that they may, and that fulfills their obligation to communicate with the district prior to the new collective bargaining agreement. And so, yeah, that, that notice was a, we indicating that they may leave. So at that point, we'll begin a collective bargaining process again for 2019, 20, and 2021, and insurance will be part of that agreement. That, it'll be a bargained item at the table.
Any other questions regarding the administrative services? Mr. Chapman.
Not a question, just a comment. For the sake of transparency, I work for Fairview Health Services, which wholly owns Preferred One, so as a result, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Anything, Dr. Newmaster.
Again, just trying to clarify as I look at the different time periods when things are locked in. So we're approving the recommended thing, the recommended plan, we're being asked to approve it for 2019. But then you talk about how that kind of locks it in for two years?
No, we can leave after one year. So it's, so we'll go out with a RFP after two years again, but we're only committed to this one year. Preferred One has given us a two-year proposal, but we're only committed to a year. So if we wanted to leave it after year one, there's no consequence for us to do so. year one, there's no consequence for us to do so.
So based on negotiations with your groups and their requests, you could be seriously considering something else?
Oh, absolutely.
After a year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anything other? Okay. So I just want to repeat the recommendation, just to make sure that everybody is aware of it, to approve the proposal for administrative services of our self-insured health and hospitalization plans to Preferred One for the twenty nineteen calendar year. There's been a motion and a second. This will require a roll call vote.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Abstain.
Ellison? Aye.
Okay. Then the motion passes. We will move on to operational item E-two, which is the action on the health insurance rates effective January one, twenty nineteen. Mr. Wall.
Sure. We've touched on this a bit already, but the district's insurance advisory council, the IAC, is made up of representatives from each employee group, met October thirtieth to set rates for the calendar year twenty nineteen insurance premiums. After reviewing the information, the committee voted to keep our, or voted toward a rate increase of two percent. Given the district's increase of between two and four percent in premiums, some of our employees will see a slight increase in monthly premium costs, others will see a slight decrease in monthly premium costs, even with the two percent increase. Additionally, the IAC voted to add a lower cost option for all employees. This option reduces the employee premium between thirty-one and fifty-seven percent, depending on single or family, and which group an employee would be in, but also includes a higher deductible plan and a narrower network. It'll be a third option that employees could choose from. That being said, the recommendation is for the board to approve the district's health insurance premium rates effective January first, twenty nineteen.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Belloy. Any discussion, questions, comments? Ms. Ellison.
I'm confused about the three different options. The page that I'm looking at is the chart that's topped with insurance benefit rates effective, and it's got the three different columns. What is, so co-pay plan, HRA plan, and then HDHP, are those the three options that employees can choose from?
Correct.
Within this plan?
Correct.
Okay. So if they want the co-pay plan, they can opt for that. Do they have an opportunity during open enrollment every year to change?
They do.
Okay. So if they?
Open enrollment is just beginning now.
Right.
With board approval. Open enrollment plan, open enrollment time period opens tomorrow.
Okay. So if they don't like the co-pay plan, they can move to the HRA plan?
Right.
Okay. That makes sense. And so then, the other question I have is the next section where they show the family rates, and then the single rates?
Yes.
There's the two different years. There's twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen for two of them, but only twenty nineteen is listed for the QHDHP.
Right. Because we didn't have that plan. So that's the new plan. We don't have last year's rate to look at.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions regarding the action? I have just a clarification. So it was my understanding that this year, there did not need to be an increase, but the committee decided to increase it two percent to kind of front-load it, if you will, to make sure that there's a little reserve in there? Is that the case?
Yeah, I think so. We, when you look at the five years of our self-funded policy or self-funded plan, we've had, we've had two years where we've, premiums have outpaced revenues, and two years where revenues have outpaced premiums. And so we had one really bad year. Twenty sixteen was a rough year. And then, and now we're looking at, we believe two years in a row where we'll have positive, we'll have positive revenue, and that should create the cushion. So we, for some reason, we had twenty-four percent jump in increase in claims that year, and then they settled back down the next year. So the idea is that you create, you create enough of a cushion so that if you have a big jump in claims one year, which probably will happen from time to time, that you have the revenues and the positive balance to offset it, so you don't have to increase rates significantly to cover for those claims.
So just as a point of clarification for me, too. So the committee is made up of all the bargaining units?
Correct.
And then, as part of this process, you guys, the administration brings proposals to them and kind of gives them several options and says, here's how we think the best way is. If we do zero, here's where we think we are. If we do two percent, four percent, and so forth, and then they, they vote on it? Is that how that's done?
That's right. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the action? Okay. This, too, will require a roll call vote.
Fahy?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Belloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we will move to operational item E-three, which is action on the six-twelve course proposals. Is that Ms. Paul? Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Mullen, Dr. Kazmicek, Ms. Pratt, and members of the board. We are here tonight to discuss the proposed course changes for the next school year, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And I'd like to introduce formerly Ms. Jen Babish. Ms. Babish has served in district leadership positions in two metro districts, where she has also been acknowledged as a national Avid trainer. And in her previous district position, she was able to lead her district in having schools achieve the Gold Star status in Avid as a demonstration school, which Avid, being a big part of our programming here, we're really excited to have her leadership here. And part of the, the exciting part of her story is that she started as a teacher here in White Bear, and she was one of our first Avid teachers. And then she served as an equity coordinator here in the district. She's got a wealth of experience and brings a lot of depth to our teaching and learning team. And she'll be leading the discussion today on the course, proposed course changes. And then we will answer any questions you have after.
Thanks, Ms. Paul.
Good evening. Thank you, members of the board, Chair Mullen, Dr. Kazmicek, and Ms. Pratt. Tonight, we are seeking approval for changes to existing secondary courses for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Our work is grounded in the world's best workforce goal of all students college and career-ready by graduation. We use this as a frame when we are looking at course proposals. We also look to see that the proposals align to the standards. We utilize our career navigators at the high school to inform us of employment trends, and we take into consideration perspectives from employers, post-secondary institutions, and former and current students. Finally, we look to our strategic plan for guidance. In this case, we look specifically at strategy two, all students have equitable access to rigorous education. We start the course proposal process by asking the curriculum leaders and departments to submit a proposal. We take the proposals to multiple stakeholders for feedback, including our World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee and our Student Advisory Committee. As we define what it means to be career-ready, we want to provide access to students in middle school, so when they reach high school, students have the opportunity to explore areas of interest. We provide coursework that focuses on industry-specific skills and essential soft skills, hands-on experiential learning opportunities, opportunities to gain credentials and/or college credit while in high school, opportunities to connect with students to industry and post-secondary options, and prepare students to enter the workforce with skills in high-demand areas. These are all efforts we take to build a bridge to accelerate students' journeys from middle school to high school to college and career As we define what it means to be college-ready, we provide students with a wide range of options to take rigorous coursework, reduce the need for students to take remedial courses in college, and provide the opportunity for students to earn college credit through concurrent enrollment options through the University of Minnesota, Century College, and St. Paul College. The White Bear Lake area schools has four career pathways for students in manufacturing, construction, information technology, and healthcare. We also have two emerging pathways in automotive and education. I want to first provide you with a quick update on our career pathways courses. The four courses highlighted are part of our manufacturing and construction pathways, and these four courses now have been approved for articulation through St. Paul College. So students who pass these courses and pursue a career, program, or major at St. Paul College will receive college credit. We also take into consideration student interest and enrollment trends when we are looking at course proposals. We consider school capacity to implement new courses, including implications for staffing, scheduling, and facilities. As mentioned before, we take course proposals to multiple stakeholders for feedback. After multiple feedback sessions, there are no new course proposals tonight. There are only name changes, term changes, and realignment proposals to bring to the board. The first are middle school name changes. The first proposal is to eliminate the offering of Enrich Science Seven and Enrich Science Eight, and to offer Science Seven and Science Eight. Challenge by Choice has been so successful at the middle schools that we have more students who sign up for enriched than non-enriched. This has resulted in large enriched classes and scheduling difficulties. For example, students who have multiple enriched classes tend to have more difficulty getting their elective choices. The science department would like to offer the enriched course to all students. This will allow us to provide a challenging curriculum to all students and help even out class enrollment. We would also put additional structures in place to ensure that our top students are challenged, and our students who need extra support get the help they need. Some examples are science teachers' team teaching, grouping, and regrouping students based on their needs with the learning objectives. We would also offer choice projects so students have enriching opportunities. The second middle school proposal is from the world language department. Currently, our world language courses offered at the middle school are Spanish, German, French, and Chinese. The proposal suggests changing the name of the world language courses from beginning, intermediate, and advanced to A, B, and C. For example, beginning Spanish would be called Spanish A. The rationale for the change is to provide a better explanation to families and to students of the sequencing of world language courses at the middle school instead of providing possibly a false representation of the level of the course. The high school name changes include proposals from the family consumer science and language arts department. The first proposal is to change the current culinary arts course to culinary essentials. The rationale for the change is to provide students with a better understanding of what the course is about in the title, and it would provide a more accurate description of the skills taught in the course. Second, the language arts department is proposing to change the current course, World Literature, Heroes and Journeys, to just World Literature. The rationale for the change is to eliminate the confusion students have about the current name. Some students think the class focuses on popular superhero texts and films, or highlights nonfiction travel literature. This is not the case. The new course title would alleviate the confusion. Finally, there is a proposal to change the course Modern Literature, Media, and Film to Modern Literature, Film Studies. The rationale for the change is to provide students with a more accurate name that embodies the course content. This course is a rigorous, engaging film course. The name change would more accurately depict the content of the course. The art department offers a course called Photojournalism. This is a concurrent enrollment course offered through Century College. The rationale for the change is to align our course with Century's new course title, Introduction to Professional Photography: Visual and Communication Technology, ten seventy-one. The second kind of change to our existing courses is term changes. At the middle school level, the proposal is to change the current Avid Six Connect course from a semester to a full year. The intent of Avid Six Connect is to provide an entry point into sixth grade for students. It has been very successful in providing students with academic, social, emotional, and motivational support to succeed in rigorous courses. Avid Six Connect has been instrumental in providing equal access to rigorous courses for traditionally underrepresented students. The rationale for a term change would allow students time for their Avid class to meet with college tutors for academic support. Also, the full-year course would allow for more flexibility in scheduling, permitting more students to enter the course. Finally, the full-year course would support the Avid school-wide system and culture of ensuring college readiness for all students. The second term change proposal is to offer the Advanced Placement Biology course in tenth grade. Currently, it is offered to eleventh and twelfth graders. Over the last five years, the course has had insufficient enrollment to run. Also, the current prerequisites for the course are challenging for students to fit in their schedules. The science department at both north and south campus came together and agreed that students would benefit from having a tenth-grade life science course option with a level of rigor built into an AP course. The term change could offer AP biology to tenth-grade students. The prerequisites would change to match the current prerequisites of Honors Biology, which is another biology class offered to tenth graders. The new prerequisites would be Honors Physical Science Nine or Physical Science Teacher Recommendation. The rationale for the change is to provide more access for students to take AP courses. The final proposals are to realign some current courses at the high school. The language arts department is proposing to separate two courses that are currently paired, ECIS Writing Studio twelve oh one and University Writing thirteen oh one. The rationale to realign the pairing of courses would allow students to have more course offering choices. Writing Studio English twelve oh one is part of the Entry Point College in the School's CIS program offered through the University of Minnesota. It is designed as a pre-course to prepare students for college-level writing. Writing Studio English thirteen oh one is a freshman-level college course, writing course. Each course would still be offered as a semester course, but students would not have to take both, thus allowing more The art department is proposing to realign Movie Production One, Multimedia Art and Design, and Movie Production Two. The three courses are currently separate offerings. The first part of the proposal is to merge Movie Production One and Multimedia Art and Design into one course titled Media Arts and Design. The second part of the proposal is to eliminate the sequencing of the movie production courses and just offer movie production. The rationale for realignment is to offer less course options in this area of study, so students have the opportunity to take a fully enrolled course in one of the merged courses, Media Arts and Design or Movie Production. Any questions?
Mr. Wilson, actually, before we get to questions, can we get a motion to approve the action, and then we'll get it, you do it under discussion, if that's all right?
Oh, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the action for the six-twelve course proposals?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Ellison. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Fahy? Mr. Wilson?
Back to your career pathways with the inclusion of the automotive technologies, is it premature to ask, is it going to concentrate on engine, powertrain, that sort of thing, mechanical versus auto body, you know, fenders, hoods, doors? Do we know yet? Mechanical. Okay. And will we be seeking, as we do with welding certification, ASE certification, American Standards of Excellence?
Well, we have been working in partnership with St. Paul College, and the, our current instructor has been working with instructors over there to align courses with the requirements at, at St. Paul College. And we did submit a grant through the Department of Labor, and we're hoping that we're going to get some funding support to launch this program.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Dr. Newmaster?
Just a question on the two realignments. They both sound like great ideas. The first one mentioned full year to semester. The second one in the art, the second two in the art department didn't mention whether they were full year or semester, so I was just wondering.
Yep. Um...
Yep. I believe both of those are a semester course as well.
Were they originally a full-year course, do you think?
Nope, they were all semester courses.
It was like three semester courses down to two different semester courses?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions regarding the course changes? Okay, this, does this, we need a roll call?
Voice.
Voice? All in favor of adopting the proposed changes, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, they are adopted, thank you very much. Next operational item is E4, which is the action on the tentative agreement with the Local Custodial. Mr. Wall?
Thank you. The district has reached a tentative agreement with International Union of Operating Engineers Local 70, represents approximately 70 full-time and part-time custodial employees in the district. Their, their membership has ratified the agreement. It was reviewed at a previous work-study session with the board. And tonight, we're recommending that the board approve the master agreement with International Union of Operating Engineer Local 70. Yes.
And so we have a resolution to read into the record, and then I will ask for a motion on the resolution. Would the clerk please read the resolution?
Whereas the parties have reached a tentative agreement on the 2017, 2019 contract, whereas the group has ratified the contract, then be it hereby resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 624 approves the 2017 to 2019 agreement and authorizes the chair and clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the school board.
You've heard the resolution, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson and the second by Mr. Chapman? Any discussion regarding the resolution? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Fahy, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Okay, we have reached agreement with them. Next is operational item E5, which is the action on a tentative agreement with the bus drivers and bus aides?
Yes, and this group is represented by the same International Union of Operating Engineers Local Number 70. They're representing 45 of bus drivers and bus aides in the school district. And we have a tentative agreement with this group that's been ratified by their membership. We reviewed it at a work-study session. And tonight, we're recommending that the board approve the master agreement with International Union of Operating Engineers Local 70, representing district bus drivers and bus aides.
We have a resolution, and I would ask the clerk to read the resolution for the record.
Whereas the parties have reached a tentative agreement on the 2017, 2019 contract, whereas the group has ratified the contract, then be it hereby resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 624 approves the 2017, 2019 agreement and authorizes the chair and clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the school board.
You've heard the resolution, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson, is there any discussion regarding the resolution? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Fahy, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Okay, we've, those agreements are done. Next is operational item E6, which is the action on accepting the Ryan grants. Dr. Kasmicek?
Members of the board? Thank you, Mr. Mullin and members of the board. So this is our White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation, some of the amazing work they do in supporting our, our schools, in this case, our, our teachers. The 2018-19 Ryan Art Grant, awardees are listed here in the, in the following documents. I won't read through all of them. I will, I'll just mention the titles of each, but so the audience can get a flavor for what these are. So Enhancing Literacy Through Art, Enhancing Core Instruction Through Art Expression, Sending a Message, Pairing Written and Artistic Expression, I've Got Talent, Monika Elementary Art in Residence Mobility Project, Artists Around the World, and Birch Lake Theater Program. So there are details in the packet regarding each of these particular grants and the, and the recipient. And we are recommending the board accept these Ryan grants this evening.
So we've got a recommended action of accepting the Ryan Art Grants totaling $4,650 from the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson, any discussion regarding accepting these grants? Except for to say thank them very much for their grants and their generosity to the district. With that, we'll, this will require a roll call vote.
Fahy, aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Okay, we accepted those grants. Last on the agenda for operational items is E7, which is the second reading of school board policy, 406, 211, 423, 424, 505, and 509. I think we'll do these in one fell swoop, if we can get a motion to accept those policies for their second reading.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. All those in favor, or any discussion regarding the policies, excuse me. Any discussion regarding the policies? None? All those in favor of accepting those policies, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? We've accepted those policies. With that, this is the time for us to get into board forum. And I'd like to start it off, and yesterday was Veterans Day, and today I know that there are several that are observing Veterans Day. And I just want to, out there in the community, but just all across this gray nation, thank all of our veterans that have given so much to our, our nation, and thank them all, especially Mr. Wilson. I'd like to thank you for your service.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair.
And with that, I will open it up for anything else under board forum. Ms. Ellison?
I'd like to add on to your, your comment and say I'd like to also thank the military spouses and families that are, that also are part of the service.
Thank you very much.
Ask Norma, she'll tell you.
Anything else? I would encourage everybody to get out and see Mamma Mia! Seen it this last weekend, it was a great performance, very well done. I enjoyed myself, my family and I enjoyed ourselves very much. So I'd encourage everybody to get out and, and do that. Anything else? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
And I will second that, we are adjourned.